Welcome back. We'll now start our final committee, which is committee of the whole. We have four items before us for a regular agenda items. That first item is site selection criteria for potential locations for the low barrier homeless shelter and day center to be operated by the Lighthouse Mission Ministries. The city is working cooperatively with the Lighthouse Missions to identify potential sites that could accommodate an easy access shelter to serve the community. We had a potential site, but that candidate fell through. Lighthouse Mission Ministries had identified operational criteria that framed their participation. Additionally, the city has several regulatory and policy criteria that will also need to be met with regard to a potential location. Staff will present the city and Lighthouse Mission Ministries composite criteria that will be used to evaluate potential sites going forward. The staff will be using the city's geographic information system, GIS, to apply the criteria to identify potential sites for further investigations. Additionally, suggested sites submitted by community members will also be assessed during the same methodology with the results of that analysis being posted online. Our planning and community development director, Mr. Rick Sepler, is here. Rick? Or Kelly, would I start?
I just wanted to, I don't get a chance to do this often enough, but I just wanted to commend staff. As you know, we'd worked on this for such a long time, especially our staff in planning community development, and it was disappointing when we didn't get an agreement with the port that we can move forward, but I just want to commend the staff on not missing a beat and going to Plan B with a criteria immediately. And that just shows that, you know, here in the city of Bellingham, when we have a problem, we believe we can fix it or get partners to work with us to fix it. Our staff is right there to support us, and I just want you to know that they've been doing outstanding work. And not, you know, it's kind of like, well, that was yesterday, and this is tomorrow. Correct, Rick? Look at him smile because he's the one that does it every day. Anyway, I just wanted to be able to publicly commend them for their work.
Thank you, Kelly.
Well, thank you, and I'll pass that on to Tara Sandin and her division, Amy Grant, who's been instrumental. When you have a good team, the team rallies, and they refocus, and we get back on track because community deserves a solution to this issue. Good afternoon, council members. Today's presentation is an update on process. Wanted to get before you to talk about some milestones that have occurred and outline the further steps for the next week, coming weeks, as we move forward. As the mayor mentioned, this is one where we ran into a closure at one point on a choice that wasn't going to work for us. The Lighthouse Mission Ministries Board met. They reconfirm their desire to work with us into the future. The city is appreciative of their continuing commitment, and certainly our community truly has benefited from all of their actions to date in supporting the unsheltered and homeless in our community. They wish to move forward. They have limitations in terms of their pro forma, the way they do business, and they've developed criteria that we folded into our own criteria for moving forward with this partner. These criteria represent these parameters that are necessary for us to successfully move forward on the project, as well as our own regulatory construct. So they're both functional, the needs of the partner operationally to make it work with the financing that they're bringing to the table and the services they provide, and our own construct of comp plan, urban village plans, and zoning. I think notable in looking at the criteria we have in front, the general locational criteria, is that it is very important, for a very good reason, operationally for the Lighthouse Mission to be in close proximity to the shelter. They're shared economies. We did discuss, and they did evaluate vans, support perhaps from the city or others to see a more remote location. The addition of permanent staff and the separation from their program members who volunteer. There are folks in programs who serve others. They may have been shelter residents. They now are in a residential program at the mission. They volunteer as part of their commitment into the shelter. We need to have that in close enough proximity, as well as shared services, rather than duplicating services for the mission itself. So it does identify two time-related constraints. One is a five-minute walk, and we've provided a map in your packet that shows that, and the second is 10 would be the outside parameter for us to look at. Additionally, the city's concern would be to have these located as possible away from residential areas, and we'd want to follow clearly all of our adopted plans and regulations. While it's important to note that some criteria are firm, as the ones I've mentioned from the mission, notably their walking distance, we do know that there is unlikely that we'll find a site that will meet all of the criteria in the area that's been done. And I think we have to acknowledge that site identification is an iterative process. It's one where you try to identify the site that meets the most criteria. And then, as you look through it, absent a successive review, you look for the best fit, and that might mean us having a policy discussion in the future about some of the things that we do control in terms of our own adopted plans and regulations, and whether strict compliance of those would remain in the public interest absent other choices. We will facilitate this review with our GIS system, and we do think that after we initiate it, we have to dutifully proceed before we start coming into discussion of which criterion do you wish to reevaluate and perhaps weight lower in the criteria as you go through and process it. First, you do a straight one. Let's see what we've got. Then, from that, we come back and do subsequent analysis, flexing the weighting of the various criteria. If that includes a policy change, we'll be back before this body to talk about the parameters are changing, to make it work within this, these identified parameters. We're going to do small alterations. We have to weigh the community benefit for that. The other purpose on these criteria is that it's very important in that our community members have suggested a number of sites, and a number of the sites, while on first blush, might seem appropriate to the folks suggesting them, they wouldn't work with this partner. And what we'd like to do, learning a lesson from other communities, is post all those suggestions and assess them quickly by these criteria. If they fall down and would not be able to meet it, we can note that we've assessed that one, and we may reevaluate that if we modify our criteria. But I think it also helps us take outliers that are suggested. Properties out at Sunset and Hannigan, for example, likely wouldn't work for any combination of circumstances, and show that we're responsive and just, we considered it, but it doesn't work with this partner. We'll retain it if other partners are identified or we find out the means of proceeding. We'll keep council informed on this process. I think it's very important, especially as we get to a point where we have to weigh those tough choices. And we always welcome any insight or comments you might have in these criteria, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the process to date or how we facilitate it.
Councilor Hamel?
Well, I think one other piece that's not, most I didn't see it in here, is that there are sites that are, a site in particular that's been proposed that meets the criteria to some degree, excuse me, but it's at odds with our 2008 Old Town Subarea Plan. That's the 600 West Holly site that's been suggested, often referred to as Sashon Door or the old Restore site. I think that, you know, putting a shelter in that location basically shuts the door on redevelopment of that area in any meaningful way. That subarea plan calls for about 1,000 residential units of housing and about 400,000 square feet of commercial development. So significant investment right where we want it. That also, you know, on the counter to that is to put that 1,000 units somewhere else and put the 400,000 square feet somewhere else, like in a UGA, for example, which then triggers, as I mentioned this morning in the planning commission, or planning committee meeting, rather, that triggers contractual obligations with fire and police, and doesn't include pipe sites and roads going out into our UGA. So the point being is that that area is really critical for infill, in my opinion, and I think that that needs to be part of the discussion as to why that might not be the best fit for a location for a shelter.
Yeah, it is zoned residential or commercial, if I might to respond to that. The criteria we've listed is to be consistent with our adopted plans and regulations. We'd have to weigh that. We think, just like the Lighthouse Mission feels that the five to 10-minute walk is essential, we start off with highly valuing our adopted plans. There's a reason we put them into place. However, it might be a little premature to come to the conclusion that we might have to revisit that. Let's run the assessment, see what comes up, if other properties would bubble to the top. Absent that, it's a policy decision to weigh those kinds of changes, whether you wish to stay the course, or whether you wish to go and change the policies to accommodate it. That's something that involves this body, and we'd have to come back saying, having run all the assessments, we're not able to make the fit without reconsidering policy. Do you wish to proceed that way, or do we wish to try another approach? We're not there yet, but I'll assure you, we will be back before you if we arrive at that site, at that position.
Terry, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, a couple of comments. One relating to the criteria number two, to be in the downtown core and linking that with services. I've got a little problem with that. When you look at where services actually are, they're not in the downtown. There are some in the downtown core, but drug and alcohol services through Catholic Community Services out on James Street, DSHS, either out at Cordada or out off in James Street, the food bank out off in Ohio Street. The Rainbow Center is no longer in downtown. It's mobile. So when you link that with downtown because of services, that doesn't necessarily fit. And also about the homeless population majority congregating, we have a certain segment, I think, of the homeless population that we see invisible in the downtown core. But I think if you look at actual numbers of homeless people in the community, they're not necessarily congregating in downtown. They don't want to, an awful lot of our homeless population doesn't want to be seen down on the, they're not the ones you see down on the street corners. So, and you look at the maps of where the homeless camps are, they're not necessarily within easy walking distance of the downtown core. They're scattered out at different places. So, you know, I think that part, I think we need to relook at, and I just have to say, that limitation of five and 10 minutes, I am really disappointed because I just really think that limits so much, because we've looked at most of those places. If you look at working with the port, some of the places they have suggested, that's got pushed off the map on that. I mean, the limitations on that little circle around there is so restrictive. I don't know how, it kind of ties our hands with it. Just.
Yes, Kelly, go ahead. We're going to go ahead and put the map up to show what we're talking about with regard to the walking radius.
Just remember, and I think Rick prefaced his remarks with this, this is working with the partner we have now. So that's kind of the more restrictions with that. I understand what you're saying, because I think we've talked about by services, meaning by C Mar, by Peace Health, by, you know, there's a lot of other places, but that would mean potentially maybe not partnering with the Lighthouse Mission, or maybe we partner with them on a smaller project instead of the bigger project. I mean, we're looking at all of that, but I think our first step was, can we partner with them under the design that we'd already established, and would that work out? So I agree with you 100% on not all the services are in downtown, but the idea was, with this partner and this design, this is what we're looking at.
Pinky?
Thanks, Rick. A couple of things, you know, what we just went through trying to find a low-barrier shelter down at the port, I think really raised the profile to everyone in the county that we have a big challenge to solve. And what I'm hoping we can do with this is try and collaborate with everybody, and maybe if we could send the information, our criteria list and the map, and ask also the port, the county, maybe the chambers, the WBA, the downtown partnership, and get them all to post this information on their site, and ask, we need, ask everyone to help us solve this, because it's bigger than us, and to maybe kind of push that. And then I also thought, maybe with the map, could we possibly show on the map all the places that are now no longer in this discussion? Because maybe we could identify, like put little colored areas that says, this is, you know, off the table or whatever, because people might start back with things, we've already gone through the vetting of everything. So maybe to identify, help us solve the problem, and here's what we've already looked through, and here's our criteria, and see if we can get everybody to play along to help us solve this.
Rick, go ahead.
Yes, if I might, excellent suggestion. One of the reasons coming before you with the criteria is to address that. And on Councilman Bornman's bar questions, what I'm hearing you say is the weighting of that criteria would be rather low comparatively because of changes. I should say, the Lighthouse Mission can do what the Lighthouse Mission could do, and we should respectfully not be disappointed in them, because their limitations are based on their operation. They've done a yeoman-like job. They're the only organization that's come forward with fully, to fully fund the construction of a facility on their own dollar. And except that, you know, if we go with that partner, we have some limitations in terms of how they functionally could work. So I think the mayor is spot on in terms of approaches that we'd consider.
I'm going to go ahead and take a turn, and then we'll go with you next, April.
Yeah, it's that first criteria, and the one that is tied to the Lighthouse Mission Ministries, which seems to be the most restrictive, and there's a reason, and you've said it yourself, Kelly, why we are treating that criteria so importantly at the beginning. I'm just thinking that that may be the one that hamstring us the most, and I can think of three suggestions that people brought forward to me out on Lakeway, up north part of Bennett Drive, over on Cornwall, that are outside the radius that we may need to consider. So I guess I'd like to start that the B list, which is all the ones that fall outside the map in case we can't find one. And, but if that's the case, then our new challenge is, who is the partner? Can Lighthouse Mission be supported so that they continue to be the partner? Because right now, there's a reason why they're saying no, and if not Lighthouse, then whom? And we may be driven to finding or creating a new partner, is, you know, if we're not successful in the process you're undergoing. So that's really just an observation. Kelly, go ahead and comment, and then go to April.
Right. I just wanted to say that one of the continuum of housing, Community Solutions Work Group idea that we're going to work on would be that April and Dan are going to be on, is to look at the continuum of partnerships and services rendered, and see, maybe it's the Lighthouse Mission has a mission to do this, and somebody else has a mission to do this part, and somebody else has a mission to do this part, and you can chunk it up a bit. So I think that, I think you're right. I mean, that's part of what we're going to be doing, is getting the providers to the table to say, this is what I can do, and this is what I can do, and what is the continuum of housing that we're all committed to, that kind of thing. And then I've had, you know, a private interest come to me and say, well, you know, we build certain kinds of shelters that train certain kinds of clients to do, go out and get a job, and we move them through the system, and it's a very specific group of people, but maybe that's not the people, then, that would be in a low-barrier shelter. They could be someplace else, like the women and children, maybe at Dorothy Place, or Lydia Place, or DV SASS, or whatever. So we're keeping our mind open, but we really believe, because of the effort and the commitment that the Lighthouse Mission has made, that we deserve to thoroughly scour what we have that might, we might be able to partner with them, because Rick's right, we're not going to find probably somebody else in the same circumstances that's willing to pay for the building of the structure. And then it would fall back onto us, or potentially partners, you know, to partner on it. So this is just basically to say, give the Lighthouse Mission the respect that I believe they deserve for stepping up like they have.
Thank you, Kelly. April?
Two things. One, the five-mile radius, I'm assuming that you put that through mapping, and that's not as the crow flies, but as a person can walk. And then, just with how you calculated that, because unfortunately, there's, people can have all kinds of conditions, especially disproportionately within people who are unhoused. So, I mean, is this like a typical five-minute walk, or is this, like, if you maybe have an ailment, something that causes you to walk a little bit slower? I'm just trying to understand how you came up with that.
I'd ask Chris Mahi to speak more specifically on that, but typically, it's an average time that includes a wide variety of people of different abilities and walking, and it does use the roadways as opposed to straight as the crow flies. So it's a starting point. I think if something were immediately adjacent to the five-minute, we'd probably say it was five minutes. But it is important, we did talk with Lighthouse, many of the folks who are in their program who would be the volunteers do have disabilities, so we were very cognizant about the walking distances.
Well, yeah, typically, either carrying carts, or backpacks, or many, many bags. And so I know for me, a five-minute walk, having those kinds of things would be very different than a five-mile walk.
Absolutely.
Typically. The other is, I know the criteria, the criteria number three is located away from residents, and I can understand why you said that, but I've just, I've been pleasantly surprised with different conversations within neighborhoods of people recognizing that this is, this is more than just a Band-Aid approach. This is certainly systemic. Something's causing this, and that we're all part of it. I've seen in the Columbia neighborhood willingness to talk about ADUs and different types of housing forms, and recognizing that they're not as integrated with class and mix. And so as I was talking about this and just said, oh, you know, residents, neighborhoods are off, people were like, well, why? Like, so I'm just wondering if you haven't been to the specific neighborhoods there, to have a very specific conversation around, should we really take this off? And maybe we need to wait until it's something that could be potentially right there, but I think we'd be surprised with some of our neighbors and neighborhoods that they might be more open-minded than we give them credit for.
And I'll kind of go back to, we're working under right now, the plan that we started with, which was a 200-bed shelter. When I have talked to people about the same thing, and they've said the same thing, it's more a willingness to, for at least what they've described to me, a willingness to work on smaller projects, like we're doing the Birchwood neighborhood or something else, not necessarily a larger low-barrier shelter in the neighborhood. So that's one reason that's there, is the, that's the, I mean, we have a project, we have a partner, we have a location, and if any of those things change, they'll probably all change to some degree.
Okay, Roxanne?
I just think this is such a tough nut to crack, especially because not a lot of people want this next door to their residence, but at the same time, it's such a service that so many people in our community need. Also, I just really wanted to express gratitude that our city is willing to continue with this in addition to the Lighthouse Mission, because it would have been really easy for us to take the opportunity to just throw our hands up in the air and say, there's not much more we can do at this point. But I'm glad that we're going to keep trying, and I just hope we'll get the best ideal property that meets so much of our criteria. So thank you.
Okay, this is from information only. Is there any further discussion on this issue? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thanks for the briefing on that. Our next item is the inter-local jail facility financing and use agreement. The JFFUA describes the financial agreements, including the use of a potential sales tax and cost allocation of each participating jurisdiction to build the new jail, and also additional related costs related to the jail. The JFFUA also describes the uses of the proposed facility, as well as certain operational aspects of the existing facility. And coming up on Tuesday, no, on last Tuesday, May 30th, the Waukam County Council affirmed the size of the bed tentatively, or I don't know how tentatively, actually, at 440 beds, plus or minus 3%. And in addition to that number, there's also, I think, 36 or approximately, mental health or medical-related beds also being made available. We have that jail facilities use agreement before us. It appears to be unchanged since about a month ago, I believe. Mr. Heinrich?
Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. I did, thank you, Michael. I did want to point out that what was in your packet was actually not what the county acted on. We did not receive that until later in the afternoon. However, there's only two very slight changes I wanted to draw your attention to. In recital number six, it reads, the Waukam County Council may consider, and what's in your packet is will consider. And then on recital number 10, there's one sentence added at the end, this facility shall not be retained as an adult correctional facility, and that's in regard to the Division Street facility. So those were the two changes that were made. We didn't get those in time to put them in your packet, and I'd be happy to send that complete version on to the council.
Please do. Council members?
Well, let me just say, first of all, that lousle one surprised me. I'm kind of open to the idea of the Division Street facility. If this actually precludes it, says it shall not be used?
Correct. I believe the plan is for that facility to become a behavioral health triage center.
Of the whole facility?
Yes.
We do need a triage facility. I didn't realize that we had to choose one or the other. Okay. Council members? Dan?
I guess this would be a question for Gene Pinky or the mayor. What is your assessment of the total cost of this agreement for Bellingham taxpayers, including interest payment per diem, capital costs, and ancillary costs like booking fees for the 30-year period?
Well, so from the capital side, it would be about $33 million on capital. So the, what we spend today is about 1.2 to 1.5 million on booking fees annually. So that would be, at 1.5 million, that'd be $45 million over 30 years if those stayed, booking fees, right? Per diem charges, booking fees stayed at 1.5 million a year for 30 years. That's going to, the per diem charge, the booking charge, that one's a little bit difficult to answer over the life of the agreement, but the capital side one is not.
Go ahead.
Okay, Dan, again.
Okay. All right. So obviously, a lot of concerns around this agreement. So the amount, the amount that Bellingham gets back, in my opinion, is canceled out by the per diem charges. So assuming 50 Bellingham only misdemeanants at the current 108 per day times 365 days, we'd pay 1.97 million per year in per diems, and that's at today's rate, but that rate's gone up twice since I've been on council. At full 70-bed capacity, which is what this agreement asks us to buy, Bellingham gets 70, 15.8% equals 70 beds. So that's, I think that's an assumption that everything fails, that we failed, that as policymakers, that you all failed in the admin role, that the intervention programs that we're talking about all are not succeeding. So then that gets us to 70 beds. At the current rate, which, 108, which it won't be, it'll be higher, the amount would be, for per diems, would be 2.75 million, and you add our capital contribution, and Bellingham taxpayers would be paying 3.8 million per year for 70 beds at $54,000 a bed. So in this, I'm just using simple math here. I'm just taking the per diem, how many beds we're buying, and times it by, you know, the amount of days in a year. So that adds up quite a bit. I mean, even at the 51-bed, it's around $91 million over the course of the 30-year agreement, just for Bellingham only misdemeanants. So that's not anything else. It's just our misdemeanants. So I'd love to be wrong on that math. Correct me if I am, but it just seems like a huge investment. At no time are we discussing anything other than really the financial agreement. We're not talking about, I mean, the task force, the task force talks about interventions, and, you know, I, but the conversation happens in a side- and, you know, I, but the conversation happens in a silo. The, the task force that I serve on, the mayor serves on, does not really communicate in any kind of meaningful way with the stakeholder work group that did the really good and hard work on putting together this, this agreement. And I, and I think it's going to be less than 70 beds, and I think it's going to be less than maybe even 50 beds. I agree with the county executive when he said, "The greatest benefit of the success of the jail diversion task force and its efforts to reduce recidivism and providing robust alternatives to correction will be realized by the City of Bellingham," in a memo on May 7, 2015, was sent to council and the mayor's office. I think that we will be successful, but the, I think the overall fundamental problem with this is that we're being asked to do our work out of, out of order, in my opinion. We are out of order in isolation of influencing facts, mitigating facts. We're being asked to, we're not being asked to consider reforms and improvements to our local criminal justice system in determining the size, location, and cost of the jail. In fact, those items aren't even up for discussion. I think that people, I think that decision-makers, including voters, need to have data and information. We do, we do not have the benefit of that at all. And Mr. Heinrich, you and I have discussed this at length, I think to the point where you want to probably put me in the jail, you're so irritated. But I, okay, and the mayor. But I think that, you know, we, we have just over one year's worth of data on Bellingham's electronic home monitoring program. What happens when the county and small cities implement their versions of that program in any kind of meaningful way? How does that affect the jail population? And how will the new, new intervention programs like Grace or increased release on personal recognizance or field, police field discretion with citations and warnings versus arrests affect the population? We don't know that. So the, this number that we, this 440, 10 years ago was 900. Last two years ago was 520, and now it's 440. It was being argued down to 400 in the daytime session on Tuesday in the county council chambers. Truth is, we don't know. We don't know the answer to that, to that question. What is the appropriate and correct number? We can guess, and we can have an educated guess, but this is the single largest investment in Waukam County's history, and getting it off by just a few points is huge. Our 15.8% number is what, what we're being asked to contribute. We could, we actually use it at 13.4%. It's a difference of over $291,000 per year that we would be actually subsidizing or contributing to the county for something that we're not, not really using. And the 13.44 number is, the number I'm using, that was from last round of negotiations that was submitted to us by the county. I know that number is somewhat in dispute, but that's what they gave us, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm working off of. So out of order and in isolation of mitigating facts, that's the environment that we're being asked to make one of the most important decisions in this county's history. And that, that's just, that's my perspective, I'm one of seven up here.
Jean?
I think Brian wanted to respond first, then I'll say. You don't want to respond? Okay. I hear you, Dan, but I want to tell you, if we don't agree this year to a jail facility use agreement, we'll be borne in the own cost of our own jail. And that's something I don't want to see at all. That's where we're at now. We, Pinky and I and the mayor and her staff, staff, both staffs, Mr. Lous, and Tyler, and Brian, and the mayor, and the lawyers, and everybody, we were sent to get a better deal for Bellingham. And financially, we did get a better deal for Bellingham. We did. The council last week voted four to three to keep the size to 440, plus or minus 3%. The council voted four for three to the location. I don't know what else is going to happen over there. It's up to them. I know that I'm strong enough with this, that we should move forward with this and send it over there. This committee was formed of, was it 15 or 19, 15 or 16 people? 13 of us, it was unanimous, all 13 of us voted to send to every jurisdiction this jail facility's use agreement. And our work was done. So I understand fully how it's, how it's done. Everybody up here gets their crack at it. But as somebody who comes from the jail wars years ago, like I've said before, the first minute I took office, we were in a $6 million lawsuit with Waukam County for not paying our fees for jail. That's the first issue we, I had to tackle with. And if it wasn't for the leadership of Mark Osmond and Pete Crammer to get in a room and hammer out a deal that was not easy to sell on the county council side, it was very easy to sell on the city side, but they wrangled with it for a long time and finally came to an agreement. And that's how we ended up today. This is, you know, if the county council doesn't put it on the ballot, it's all up to them. All I'm saying is, we've done our job on the committee side that we were sent to do, and I think we need to do our job here. Send it across the street and see what happens. And I'm confused, you know, there were two members on the, from the county council. I'm positive they were on the losing end of what happened, coming back and asking us to make changes or asking us not to forward. I'm not accusing anybody of that, but it seems a little bit like it. I just think we have done our job and I'm ready to move forward on it. And anyway, for discussion purposes, I'll move approval of the jail facility use agreement.
Second?
We have a motion before us to approve the jail facility use agreement. Further discussion? April?
Well, I have a couple of things I'd like back from staff before I can vote on this. They're around the languages that we've been talking about and wanting further assurances and guarantees. And one of them, it looks like I have about three or four assurances. One is the guaranteed access to mental health beds. And I know we've said, oh, well, we're going to have access to those, but language, like, I don't know if it's a percentage of the inmates that we have in, that we will always have that percentage of accessibility to those mental health beds? Because it's quite possible, and, and we've seen some of the things that can happen politically where we could, in a way, be isolated from those if, if other people got to utilize those, those beds. So I'd need language around that as I put this forward. I need obligation from hereforth, from Waukam County and the sheriff's office, that they would immediately and in perpetuity give priority to pretrial inmates. Absolutely, it needs to happen now or as soon as we put this forward, and it needs to stay in perpetuity. This will never be a question again. We can send people that have long-term sentences, we can send them across. But we're already learning right now, we're trying to take somebody in the middle of a mental health crisis within four hours, put them on a van, and get them across the mountains, and it's not working out, and we're going to see some really negative costs from it. And hopefully, nobody's going to get injured. The third one that I have are, I want to see incentives. We, we are committed, we are going to do this, we're probably going to find other monies to do better programs. And if, if we end up using 15 beds or 20 beds and we have 70 reserved and they end up getting rented out, I want to see incentives for why, why would we and why would other people? And I don't know what that looks like, but something needs to be coming back. If we really do our job and we do it well, that keeps other people motivated to keep people out of jail as well. The one thing I didn't get at the last meeting is, I asked for the estimated costs for the city if we were to open up our own justice center that had booking holding services. Not that I want to go that direction, but for me to make a good understanding of, okay, I have to forego location, which is a huge issue for me, I need to be able to talk to constituents and explain, it's just not feasible, or maybe it is. I, I really don't know because I don't have those numbers. And I also would want assurances on a very specific timeline and guarantee for our downtown facility, the jail here, for whatever they're going to be, we're going to be doing to it. So whether it be the remodeling, if we are going to be requesting a booking holding facility there to make it more efficient for our police officers and our courts, I would need very specific, because I do have the worry that we, we've seen budgets and we've seen going out to property that we haven't quite started breaking ground on. If, if things start costing more, I don't want to turn around and somebody to say, well, our pockets are empty, we can't take care of this facility here, and it really needs to be taken care of. So I can't pass this today. I would need to know these very specific things for me to be able to support it going forward. And I think it, it helps hopefully the county council, I'll be sending my remarks as well. If, if the council would support me, I would, I would ask that we just hold till the next meeting so we can get some of this language and see what it would look like to move forward in inter-local agreement that has these very specific things. And many of these would benefit other small cities because they too would get incentives and have obligation for their pretrial as well.
Well, I see Jean and Kelly, do you?
The only, only point I'll make, April, is this is a jails facility use agreement that's been hammered out. We'd have to go out to all other cities and start messing around with language again. That's my only problem with it. Going back and forth and we're on a timeline and I don't know where it stops. We went through that before, and if we continue down that road, who knows what we'll end up with? But I'll let Kelly speak.
Well, just, I just got a, a copy of an email that arrived from Sheriff Elfo while I was gone. And there was a verbal agreement that we would start treating everybody equitably as far as pretrial. And the county is now pursuing an agreement with Yakima so that we can manage pretrial inmates here, starting now, not waiting until the jail's built or waiting until an agreement's signed or something like that. And I just wanted to give you that information, that I think there is an understanding on the part of the county that sending pretrial people over to Yakima is not right. And so they are moving forward on that part.
Is that, because, not to bring back old news, but when we first, the first jail didn't pass, the first jail levy didn't pass, we had an agreement that our pretrials wouldn't be leaving and then?
This is different because this is as a part of the longer discussion we've been having with them.
Okay, so there will be something written?
As a result of the conversation that we had with, in the, in the group with Pinky and, and Jean.
So is?
I, I don't use that word in public.
Okay, we'll go to Pinky and then Terry.
I think Brian had something to do there.
Just, go ahead. Just quickly, if you would look at, April, to your question about access, section three begins on page five, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Part two jail operations, page seven, section three availability of jail facilities and services provided. That walks through who has access to those services? So I'm, I guess I'm hopeful that that answers the mental health question, the mayor referenced number two in terms of pretrial. Number three, if you're saying for incentives for non-use, non-party per diem rates will be used to the benefit of all the parties to the agreement. So those stay in the, in the fund, if you will. So we do see benefit. I don't know if that's what you were referencing or not. Number four, the estimated cost for our own facility, that's, it's a challenge to do that. And I think what I would say is to really drive down a number that's relevant to Bellingham would probably take a tremendous amount of time and take some cost on our behalf as well. I can anecdotally tell you what other jurisdictions have looked at and what those costs are, and we can maybe extrapolate what that would mean for Bellingham, and I'd be happy to do that. And with respect to the downtown facility remodels, or remodeling rather, I'll have to talk to the county executive's office. I know they have a plan in place. It's not contemplated, I don't believe in this agreement, so I'll see if I can get better, better detail on that, but I know it's forthcoming.
Pinky, is it okay if she continues?
So, a couple of things. Yes, we did get a better deal for the City of Bellingham. We didn't have everything under our umbrella to negotiate, but that part I think we did a pretty good job on. And we also admit there were concessions. So absolutely, it was a negotiation. But fundamentally, it does now incorporate as a method of operations, diversion programs and alternative programs instead of a stipend or a fee for that. So in overall, I feel a lot more comfortable on moving forward on that. There's only one thing I have of particular concern, which I mentioned last time, is the fact that the advisory board is only on here as a yearly meeting. So what I, not under this motion, but what I would like to propose is maybe we have a resolution from the city that could specifically ask for this, instead of changing the whole agreement with seven different cities, maybe we could ask for a resolution that completely outlines the minimum requirements. And I don't think those minimum requirements should be once a year. I think they should be a quarterly meeting of this advisory board. Because with all due respect with Sheriff Elfo, I know he's got his hands full and, but his main priority is incarceration, and he hasn't moved super quickly when it comes to updating things for diversion and alteration programs. So I don't want a year to go by every time we're meeting. So I think it's important that, that we keep, as a city, that we show leadership on making sure that we're asking that this happen at least four times a year. Again, I think that could be a separate resolution. That way, we don't have to go all, back to all seven cities on this agreement, but that is one thing that I'm not very flexible on. I think a year is too long.
And, well, I guess what I'd say, because I, I agree with you, if we want to be, have the accountability we want in the implementation, but it says at least once a year? And I guess for me, if things are going right and every year we're going to make adjustments in the, you know, the rates or we need to do this or we need to do that, it isn't something we're going to do every quarter. But I think that we could ask for a meeting as often as we wanted. And I think your idea about doing something separate from the agreement to kind of outline that is perfectly appropriate. But I, I think if it would only said once a year, then I probably wouldn't have supported it. But since it said at least once a year, then I figure if there's something that comes up that we need to meet on, that we can, we can request more meetings than just one.
So, and, and just the particular part that I'm talking about is part two jail operations, where it says the sheriff will reasonably consult chief of police issuing concerning, sheriff will meet once a year or on around. So I really, I really think that this is important, that we're all doing this together so that these wording specifically say, once a year.
What page are you on?
I am on page 128, part two jail operations, control of jail, that particular, the other page, oh, page six. There's two pages on here. Our packet is one page, but it is part two jail operations. So you might have a different page that's at on. I think in the actual contract, it's page six.
So there's two, two threads here.
There are two, yes.
One is the advisory board that the mayor was referencing.
Yes.
The other is a requirement that at least once a year, the sheriff convene the parties, not the advisory board, but the parties to the agreement. So think of the other jurisdictions. So at least once a year, he has to do that. The advisory board would convene as regularly as they would like, dependent upon what they decide to do. So there's, there's two, two different meetings. Does that make sense?
Yes, it, it does make sense. I, I see the differentiation between the two.
So I think the main thing that I was looking at on this advisory board thing was the overs, I call it oversight.
Me too.
Other people might not call it oversight, but the idea that we would be entirely aware of progress that was making, what was going on, data that was collected, costs that were being incurred, usage numbers, blah, 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 all the, all the things that we could use to decide if there needed to be adjustments in anything that we would want to recommend to the county council.
And that, that was my concern, is that it is all worded more on the financial side, and it's, we're not, I, I think all of us are, yes, very concerned about the dollars we're spending, but also what we're doing, how we're operating. I think that, how we're changing the way we do business in regards to supporting things that reduce recidivism, that give us different programs. So I think that that is a big, a big part of it, and also for us to understand, like you said, mayor, the actual statistics, what are the data? You know, who's going there? How long are they staying? What are we treating them? Like, all of those things. What programs are they using? That's more valuable.
And I think that the sheriff convening the other law enforcement people across the county, that's kind of, you know, in his bailiwick. The advisory board looking at the things you're talking about and the things Dan cares about, things I care about, and the rest of you care about, which is, how many people are we keeping out of jail? What is our success rate in recidivism or in diversion or whatever it is? To me, when I, when I look at this, two-tenths of a percent, and basically three-tenths of a percent that we're putting into our criminal justice system, to me, I look at that as not into a facility, but into a system. So if we spend less on the jail side, we can spend more on the other side. And that's why we wanted to separate out the operating from the capital costs. And that was something that originally the county did not want to do. They wanted to lump those two sums together and have it be a commitment to all the money ongoing. And what we, what we said is, that doesn't work for me because I want to know that if I'm good at diversion, then I'm not giving the county that, the resource to use for someone else to be incarcerated. We're using it to keep people out of jail and to keep people from going back to jail. My dream in the sky is that we have this three-tenths of a percent that we're using and... My dream in the sky is that we have this three tenths of a percent that we're using, and we're using this much for the jail, and we're using the rest of it fluctuating, hopefully more and more, on the diversion side. Because the amount of money we're going to be generating, certainly with the number of interventions that we believe need to be made, and the diversions, and the alternatives, and the whatever, that money could be better spent on this end of the, the front end of the equation, or the diversion end of the equation, than just keep paying to put people in jail. So, I guess when you were talking about how much it costs, it was my understanding that we would be ahead after we were spending the money that we, it would pay for both the money that we're spending now for incarceration, and we would be getting money back to the city. Is that correct?
It's close. It's close. In the first full year of collection, we would collect about 1.1 million, and I think in, Peter, I don't know if you know offhand, in 16, recognizing that we used Yakima, I want to say our costs were in the 1.5 neighborhood. I have to double-check the exact, I mean, it's going to be close, I don't know that the revenue will outpace the expense, but that, of course, depends on how active are the programs that we pursue, do we achieve success in some of those things, like FDS, that I think we have been successful. But it'll be close. Terry?
Yeah, and one, in response to April's, if you'd said if other council members had support holding it up to you, got an answer. I can do that, I don't have a problem with that, but for me, I still, you know, I've already made my statements in the past about my concerns about the initial size, and why I think overbuilding is not, is not a good thing. And I haven't seen any change with it, because I really think if we're, my understanding is, we're looking at a design that would be, could be a modular, the property's already going to be folded in here. If we were to build a smaller jail than that amount, and something hap, and something eventually happened where we were wrong, and the experts were wrong on looking at the county's program, and you would need to add more, as long as it's designed so that it could be added on to, what would be, what would stop us from, at that point, then going back to the voters and say, hey, we need to put, raise the money for this additional module? But it would provide us with a whole lot of incentive to make sure the programs, the alternatives to detention is working, so that we didn't have to go back out to add that other, that other module. And nothing's changed in my mind about that, I mean, that we need that incentive, because we wouldn't have made these changes if we didn't have that push, because we weren't doing it. And so, I'm still, I haven't seen anything changed for me, I do totally appreciate all the hard work that was done, and there's a lot of, so many items in this that's so much better financially than it was the first time out. But those are my, and maybe the county council will, they haven't fully decided on what that language is going to be, so maybe they will do that, and then I can say, yeah.
Well, and the truth is, it really is up to the county council to make that decision, they have every opportunity, they have every authority to look at what we forwarded to them, and to actually change things that you're talking about, but the conversation that you just had right now is a conversation that we've had for two years. And so, I think, I think that I felt my job, and I think Jean and Pinky did too, was on this, this part over here, was to make the agreement better, and to have some indication that a smaller jail with less incentive to incarcerate people would be a better idea, and I think the county council has every opportunity to look at that number of beds, and do whatever they want with them, and I know that some of them feel very strongly about that. And we certainly could use the money on alternatives and diversion, so.
So, I guess that's sort of where my comments begin. It seems like, like Dan said, things are out of order, the county council has the ability to make up its mind, the county council has scheduled a hearing for next week, are things going to change? It seems like that's out of order, the Incarceration Reduction Prevention Task Force really hasn't delivered its final reports, and that is entirely about reducing unnecessary incarceration, reducing the size of the jail, which is the thing that the county council may change its mind on in the future. In addition, the county is still waiting for the Vera Institute report, and the Vera Institute, which will look at possible new programs and changes, and again, with the idea that we can create better ways of treating people who may get entangled with the criminal justice system, and not have to go to the jail, and not have to add to the size of the jail, the capital cost of the jail, the operational costs that each jurisdiction bears in the jail, that's not yet brought forward. So, that seems out of order and out of sequence, so can we at least wait until the county council has its hearing? Maybe it won't change the numbers, maybe it's a divided council, and it'll stay the same division, but we have until, the county has until the end of August, their 25th meeting, to make a decision to go forward or not go forward with a ballot measure. We faced just a problem before, what felt like the city was being asked to kind of sign on to the jail plan prior to the county signing on, maybe they've signed on, maybe they're not, but then there's language, like Kelly just said, they can, it's their final determination, it may change.
This is a recommendation to them, that they can change, we only made a recommendation.
So, I want to, a council member earlier said that all 22 members of the stakeholders group supported this agreement.
13.
13, sorry.
The rest of them weren't there that...
It's not quite accurate, because what happened in that meeting is, they specifically put forward a set of recommendations in which number and cost was not included, because they had a charge of three things, and they forward recommendations on that, and they, at the last minute, said, well, we're not actually endorsing the particulars of this agreement, and part of that is because two of the county council members didn't like those numbers in there, because they knew that that number had not yet been decided. Again, I get this feeling that things are out of sequence here.
Well, they obviously are, we've all asked that, the recommendations come forward before we decided to do this. The timing, I believe the timing could have been better, we could have had the Vera Institute the first month we had the Alternatives Task Force, and we would have some of that information that we're asking for. But right now, that's why, that's why I think that the county council is the one, right now, that needs to be engaged. They're the ones that need to say, we accept this recommendation, or we don't, they need to listen to the public, that is obviously talking to all of us, about what they think about this proposal, and I think that Jean and Pinky, and myself, I know, and our staff, did the best we could, under the circumstances of only being one of three negotiators, and the other two negotiators basically agreed. So, so I think that, I mean, in the subwork group, so I think that the, sooner the county council, and I've said this to county council members themselves, as soon as they really engage on this, they set up the Alternative Task Force, they set up the Funding Task Force, they didn't require that they coordinate with each other. I mean, the county council, this is a product of their, how they wanted to proceed on this, so they can, they can fix it. But I don't think there's anything we're going to do to change it, I think it is an up or down vote on a recommendation.
Terry, and then I see Jean also.
I would like to move that we table our decision until a time after the county council has their hearing, so we can see the results of their deliberation.
Second.
So, we're now entertaining the idea of tabling until after the county's hearing, the existing motion, main motion, which is to approve the agreement. Jean?
I won't be supporting this, you know, last Tuesday night, the county council took some votes, there were a lot of four to three votes, unless somebody changed their mind, that's going to be the way it's going to be. And I'm very upset, and I'll be blunt about it, with two members of that committee who were members of our committee, we're on the losing end of that. I can't count the amount of times I've been on the losing end of votes in 24 years, and I wouldn't do what they're doing now. It's up to everybody else up here, all I'm saying is, we got the best possible deal we could, they've already taken votes on the size, they've taken votes, can something else happen? Sure, it can happen, but why does that come back on us? Again, this is a jail facilities use agreement, that's what it is. And Michael, you mentioned you were at the committee meeting, they specifically did take, and if you'd have listened to them, the size of the jail, they said, they would determine later. Last Tuesday night, the county council decided on the size of the jail, whether we like it or not, unless one person changes that vote, it's going to come right back over here of the same size. It's got to quit going back and forth, let us send it over to them, and let them tell us how they feel after we send it over there to them. That's all we're asking, that's all I'm asking, that they take action on what we've sent across the street. That's all, because if we keep going back and forth, nothing's going to happen, so I'm frustrated, I understand everybody has the right to vote they wish, and I let you vote whatever way you want to, but I think we have come to the end of the line on bouncing this thing back and forth, and we just need to, we just need to move forward.
I'll take that as speaking against the motion to table. Roxanne?
I'll get to how I feel about that in a second. You know, we have so many competing interests in this, I'm sure you can imagine, as council members, we have one section of our community that wants no jail at all, I share that dream. I hope in the future, in our society, we will not need to have a jail, and we will focus on alternatives and diversions, treatment and services. However, we're not there, we're not yet there in our society. Other people want us to just update the current jail, I hear that too, I wish that was something that was an ability, but I believe the expense of that would be so exorbitant, and we would be right back to where we are now, sooner rather than later, because that's such an antiquated building that needs so much expensive work. At the same time, I have another section of people that work in the jail, that tell me that it is very unsafe, they feel very insecure going to work every day, and I worry about the fact that something bad could happen at any point in that facility, so if somebody gets hurt, and we're still arguing these details, I feel like that's on my shoulders and the shoulders of the decision makers, and I'm very nervous about that. And I fully support the diversions and alternatives, I hope over time, let's pretend that this new jail would go forward, it would get built, it will build a financial case to show that more of that space should be used for the diversions and alternatives that we're proving, make the most sense. Eventually, I hope it could turn into an entire facility that would work on chemical dependency and mental health support, you know, and who knows, maybe so many years from now, we could turn this into a McMiniman-style restaurant, and forget that all this even happened. But I will be supporting the jail facility use agreement, and I will be voting against tabling.
Terry?
Last thing, I make this proposal because I'm looking for a way to support this, and right now, I probably can't, so I am hoping, maybe I will hear something out of that hearing, and from one of the other council members that maybe could change their mind, and give me that opportunity to be able to support it. So, I'm hoping by delaying it a little bit, it'll give me the opportunity to be able to vote yes, and that's, that's what I'm looking at for.
So, the motion before us, motion before us right now is to table our decision on the facilities use agreement until after the county has a hearing, is there any further discussion on that idea? Seeing none, all is in favor of the motion to table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
I believe that motion passed four to three, so there's no reason to take up the main motion that has to do with the jail facilities use agreement. Okay, I have a few more comments on that, let me just make the one observation, is that apparently, and I, you know, Mr. Louse, this is not meant to be a knock against you, but Mr. Louse says that we, the city, want the Division Street facility removed and closed. I personally don't have that point of view, and I don't recall us having a discussion on that issue, and the agreement was just changed to now actually require the closure of that facility. I don't think we've discussed that either, that's a peculiar little piece that I haven't even been able to think through yet. Is there any further discussion on the jail facility use agreement, which is being tabled until after the county meets? Mr. Heinrich?
Just one quick comment, the county council has to act by the end of July to put it on the ballot, not August. You referenced August, just wanted to clarify.
I'm sorry, yes, so there's an August 1 deadline, the county needs to meet, their latest time to act would be on July 25. We will, they will be having a hearing before our next meeting, which is mid-July, and there's one meeting that we have after that, I believe I have the sequence correct. Okay, but the point is that this tabling motion cannot go beyond July, and maybe not even beyond our next meeting, as I understand it, because it had to do with tying to the public hearing, which will occur on the 13th. So, our next meeting after the 13th is how I'm understanding the motion.
Yes, we will put this agreement back in the packet for the 19th.
Okay, for the 19th. Pinky?
I just have one additional comment, I just wanted to, I know we mentioned this before, but this is an inordinate amount of work, and every week, we have a revision and an update, and I just wanted to thank Brian Heinrich, and Peter Raffato, and Tyler from the county council, who have been at this over and over and over again, and I just want to thank you for all your efforts, because I know every time you bring something forward, you think, okay, here we go, and that doesn't always happen, so I just wanted to thank the three of you for your efforts, and for working with us so patiently over the last 18 months on this. Thank you for your work.
Okay, we're going to move on, we are behind schedule about a half hour, but I think it's been an important discussion, we have several important items on the agenda, and some new business to handle, so we'll move forward. The next item is entitled Options for Inquiries, Reports, and Complaints, it's hard to know how to title this discussion, but it has to do with a follow-up on council requests of the administration to discuss options for the process to provide a safe and effective avenue for community members to make inquiries, reports, and even complaints regarding activity, city activity and interactions, potential misconduct, bias, whatever complaints they have, and for a mechanism for resolution of those comments, inquiries, or complaints. Specific options include an ombudsman model, or maybe to contract with a third-party dispute resolution and mediation service. Kelly?
Well, first of all, Brian pulled up the complaints policy, it has been his job to update policies, our complaints policy was written in 1978, so things may have changed, and we might want to look at that, just in general, but the options that we're talking about right now are one piece of the larger requests that members of the community had, which is to have, you know, a citizens oversight board, or other, you know, some other kind of mechanism, and one of their concerns was, people would, were feeling intimidated or uncomfortable coming to the city if they had a complaint about the city. And so, I decided, instead of just waiting till we got the whole thing worked out with what kind of a citizen interaction would we like to have, which is the second paragraph on the agenda bill, would be to say that we do think there are a couple options that we could use for citizens to, who have a concern with me, or you, or the police chief, or the planning director, whoever it is, and don't feel comfortable, or don't know, who can we come and talk to, because we're all part of the city. So, that's the first issue, and we can, if you, if either one of those seem appropriate to you, we can bring you back something fleshed out about that. And then the second thing is, as we've talked and talked and talked and talked about this oversight idea, I want to make sure that we start with, what would the council, what are we trying to achieve by the engagement that we're talking about? And I'll be pretty blunt, I feel like all of you, and me, are really the supervision and oversight of the departments, and the directors, and then consequently, the employees. So, I'm very, I'm very acknowledging that people need to be able to do, to formulate So I'm very acknowledging that people need to be able to formulate a complaint, but I think we also, that is our responsibility, that's why we're elected, to respond to things that we might want to change. On the other hand, underserved groups in our community, we don't specifically have any board or commission or group. We've kind of included everybody in all the different groups, but that might be something that we'd like to consider, just to pull out the issues and be ahead of the curve and be able to discuss resolutions if there are, overall, how do we engage more directly, more robustly, you know, more genuinely with underserved communities in our city? So I'm interested in, you know, what we might like to achieve from that, because that keeps coming forward. Now, the police chief does have his advisory group. That does or doesn't seem to satisfy some individuals' concerns. But, so I guess it's two questions. How does someone with a concern get the first step in the front door without coming to the city? And secondly, for our underserved communities in our city, do we need some other mechanism to engage them and pull them into the discussion more specifically?
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't read the second paragraph, which says additionally, the administration will discuss city goals for community member engagement, including underrepresented groups in our community. And that was the piece here we're just referring to.
Yes.
Gene?
I agree with your first part. We are the ombudsons. You are, you know, we are between you, us, and the staffs, you and us. That's where they should come to. We are an oversight board for every department in the city. But any way that people can feel comfortable coming forward, you know, that's what I'd like to see. What ways are it for people who aren't comfortable talking to? I mean, everybody up here gets phone calls, gets emails, gets everything else, and you do the same. So any way we can come up with a different way or a way for them to come forward and talk to us, I don't have any problem with that.
Roxanne?
As one who used to serve as an ombudsman for a city, I really support this. Because one of the things that I heard that was so, you know, worrisome was that community members were telling me that they were really nervous about coming forward to the city, because then city staff, if they didn't agree, would retaliate against the person and make their project harder. And whether that was the reality or not, that's a perception that's out there. And so I would love it if we could help not only the citizens understand that they should feel comfortable coming to us, but help our employees understand retaliation is not acceptable, and this is not public service. So I'm really excited about opening up the door for this and also for diverse community members. This is the engagement we've been needing to do.
Terry?
Yeah, I'd be curious to see what a small pilot contract with the dispute resolution center would cost us to handle, you know, if people have problems, handle the complaints, you know, for them to be able, if one, if they would be willing and interested to bring that forward. My guess is, if we did it as a pilot project, I don't think the numbers are going to be that high in terms of, you know, the ombudsman program. In another lifetime, I started an ombudsman program in this area for long-term care complaints, and I worked with training, you know, volunteers and others in doing that. So I've worked in that ombudsman capacity, but I don't think we, I definitely don't think we need a full-time ombudsman to handle that kind of thing, having worked in it. But if we could maybe look at and discuss with a dispute resolution center or something like that, just to get it off our plate and to see, because I have no idea how many or if there are, you know, people about fearing retaliation, but that's about as neutral of a place as I can imagine in the city. And they do an amazing job, so I'd just throw that out for, as an idea.
And I think that everything that we've heard so far is anecdotal.
Right.
So there's no facts, you know, data behind the request. So maybe having a pilot project would be good. And I'm not even as concerned about the retaliation. I mean, maybe in certain sectors, I would be more concerned about that. I'm more concerned about the intimidation factor, what people are afraid to come and talk to me because I'm the mayor. Not because I'm going to be mean or do something bad, but just because I'm the mayor, and maybe they have a complaint about me. But even if they don't, I mean, it's not, sometimes there's a feeling of intimidation just by fact of people's roles or positions, so.
Okay, I'm going to see Dan, and then April will be next.
What I heard us talking about before was civilian oversight committee for, or commission, or I don't know what the right term is, for the entire city. That way, if there was a complaint at the Parks Department, or fire, or whatever, that there would be a channel or ability for a person to lodge a complaint and have a process to resolve that. That's what I heard us say, and I know that, I don't know what an ombudsman is. It sounds like a German tuba player to me, but I don't know what that.
It's Terry.
Yeah, but I think that, I don't think that's what people were asking for. I think that they were asking for, like, civilian participation in the process of resolving a conflict or a complaint or discrimination or bias, or whatever the case might be. So that's where I'm at with this process, so I just wanted to chime in on that.
Yeah, and I just have a problem with this idea of oversight. I can see recommendations, but the term oversight, I believe, puts the decision-making in the hands of unelected individuals. And I really think that then the other citizens don't have any recourse, because they can get rid of all of us if they don't like the job we're doing, but when you have an appointed board of citizens, it's usually why they're recommending bodies, because they recommend to the elected officials that then can be booted. I mean, to put it bluntly.
April?
You know, I wonder if there isn't a better process that we're trying to get to. I agree. I think that's where the initial, if I remember the motion correctly, was more of what Dan was saying. Especially in this packet alone, just on what we're talking about now, and this was based out of, we had just passed the immigration policies, but we'd also passed a resolution that said some really specific things, like Black Lives Matter, and protected classes, and marginalized communities, and unions. And we were saying, like, we're saying that, but are we doing that? And then that's where the motion came out of, like, how do we make sure we're doing that? And I think with the housing, we're seeing it, with homelessness, we're seeing it, with criminal justice reform, we're seeing it. And I just recognized this weekend that that's why I'm struggling with all of these so much, because it's that equity piece that we really haven't baked into everything, and we don't actually even understand it. We don't have a full umbrella over even all the legacies that says we will always be looking at making sure we're distributing our resources equitably to attain equality for everybody. That's what equity is, right? I think we get it messed up a lot of time, and we use the words interchangeably, but it's that, what is that equity piece? And then every time we have to make a decision about a jail, about housing, about issues of the unsheltered, how do we go back and look at those very specific things? Because I think, as you said earlier today in our planning committee meeting, it is whenever you take care of those that are hurting the worst that we will actually get, we will get our return in our dollars and return in our investment so much better. It's not us relinquishing or giving away privileges or rights. It's just distributing them a little bit better. So other communities have done it. King County, they've really kind of started this umbrella of really looking at making sure we're making our decisions through an equitable lens. And I think that's what we struggle at. I think that's where, when we have community members that come in that are marginalized or protected classes, or just poorly represented whatsoever, that they just don't see that we're looking at it through that lens, and they feel left out. And we're just not a very representative group. I think we're all cisgendered, you know? It's intimidating enough alone to come up to an elected official, but then to come up to one that really doesn't represent you in any way, shape, or form is difficult. So I wonder if maybe starting a process, I know it's a bigger process, but it would help, it would help direct us, having some working sessions around, how do we make sure that we're making our decisions equitably? And for me, it would make my jail decision a lot easier, because I get caught up in specific things that I'm upset or I don't agree with. But if I really had this lens and this vision of understanding that we're all on that path to make sure that those resources are going to be, they're going to be given out equitably, and we're not going to miss those unintended consequences where we, two or threefold, already hurt a community that's hurting because we just didn't look at it through that lens. So it's a suggestion. I wonder if that wouldn't be a better process?
I don't think there's a decision to be made today on anything. So first of all, I would really hate for us to wait one more day with somebody being intimidated to come to the city and say, I think I've been harmed, or whatever. So I think I need to know from you, do you want me to pursue that first step in the door piece? Now, that isn't all the things you're talking about, April. This is just, how do you get people in the door right now who would be intimidated to walk into my office, or your office, or Peter's office, and say, I think there's something wrong here? So that's one question, and that's a very narrow, tiny, little question. The other one, when it talks about community engagement and understanding all that, I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm talking about oversight or decision-making on that. I'm talking about information and processing of options and, you know, that kind of thing more than oversight, making decisions on a specific police officer, a specific planning, you know, project manager, or things like that. I still would feel uncomfortable with that, but if the direction from the council is to go forward and do that, obviously, we will. So I think having more discussion about your goals on, what are all of you seeing as a goal for additional interaction? If you want to use the word oversight, oversight, what does that mean? You know, all those different things would be great to have as a discussion with the council. Because I'll tell you right now, obviously, I don't know what all of you think, because I've only heard from three of you, but, and the three of you, I don't think necessarily all exactly agree on what you want. So I wouldn't feel very comfortable moving forward with the direction I have now on that piece. I think it could stand a little more thought and thinking and, you know, ideas. But I wonder how you feel about what Terry, not that, you're just nodding your head, you're not voting, but I'd like to work on something and come forward so that we have some relief for people. And I'm not thinking about necessarily even just the advocates, I'm thinking about the average citizen.
So let's hear a little more from the city council, take a turn, and then April. I actually like the way you were phrasing it, Kelly, first step in the door. I don't know enough about how an ombudsman might function compared to a third-party contract with a mediation service. Either of those could be that safe door, that first door in. I am going to slightly disagree that we up here are part of the oversight for employees. We are told very clearly that if I get a complaint about, say, I don't know, a plans examiner who's unfairly examining a plan, it's not my job to look into that or to, you know, that I need to pass on to the appropriate supervisors who then do it, right? So no, we're not that level of oversight. And I think the concern we're talking about really is about particular misconduct, which may or may not be happening. Where do people go? And can we make that door the kind of door that anyone and everyone feels safe walking through?
Right.
So that's my feedback to you. I don't know if that's an ombudsman, but that'd have to be somewhat independent of the city, so they felt safe. I don't know if that's a third-party dispute resolution center. I don't know. I don't know if that's a human rights commission that people could go to. But again, something slightly separate from the city, but with a power to, you know, advocate on behalf of the person who might have an issue, who might have input. And I think that's an accountability tool to hold us accountable, or to hold maybe an employee, or as you said, maybe the complaints about you, Kelly, or about me, you know? So that's my feedback. I would like to see more understanding of exactly what that first door would look like, so we can start to gather more than anecdotal evidence.
Yes, okay.
Pinky?
So a couple of things. It sounds like there are lots of different definitions of what we're looking for here. So we're obviously not all on the same page in regards to what we're looking for. I think this would be a great opportunity to do something with a third party, like possibly the dispute resolution center, and kind of do a pilot program to see what people's concerns are. And I feel like we're trying to solve something where we don't really know what the need is right now. So an opportunity to do a pilot program with a third party seems like it would give us more concrete information of people's concerns and what areas we need to focus on, and it'll be less anecdotal before we move into looking at an oversight committee. So I would prefer that this be something that allows us to gather information and that feels safe and open and accessible to everyone, and gives us a better idea of what we have. So I would be willing, I think this is a good entry point to discard that discussion.
Terry?
So I guess to provide that direction, I'd like to make a motion that we direct the mayor to, or staff, to explore that possibility of contracting out with the third party for a pilot project, to consider this while she moves forward, continues to move forward, because I know you're working on the other step of developing a panel for complaints and things.
Well, I think, I think that.
First, let me see if there's a second for the motion.
Well, I'll second that.
Okay, so for discussion purposes, I'm going to have to ask you, Terry, to restate that, but it sounds like you're requesting the administration develop a pilot program for some sort of.
To develop a proposal, not to, you know, to bring back to us, you know, about that, to explore that and bring back to us. Yeah, so just to provide a direction to put together information about a pilot program with a third party, such as the dispute resolution center.
I will be very clear that this does not solve the problem Dan talked about, or the problem April talked about.
Right.
Right now, this is just that first step in the door.
Yeah.
Dan?
Does this, just to clarify here, sorry, does this mean that if, what Terry's saying, that you could concurrently develop or plan for like a human rights commission, or whatever the appropriate title is? Is that, is that your intent?
I would say that I need more conversation with you to find out what the goal of that is, because it, right now, I hear different levels of concern and goals. And I just want to make sure if I'm, if we're developing something to present to you, that we're meeting the goal that you have for it. So a human rights commission as opposed to a community engagement group, as opposed to an oversight board, as opposed to, I think that needs a little bit more discussion. So I'm just asking for, I can come back with a proposal or recommendation on the first part, which could be absorbed into any other, you know, further discussion we have about more community involvement.
Okay, as long as it doesn't preclude that type of planning, then I would support that.
Yeah, as long as I get clear direction from you and you agree on a goal.
So the motion before us is to request the administration to bring forward possible options on a pilot program whose purpose would be to, what you call providing a first doorway.
I call it, I call it first step in the door.
First step in the door.
For people that have concerns or complaints that are.
Terry, does that seem to capture it?
Yep.
And with understanding that there's other discussions up here that that won't be addressing. Is there any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's the recommendation to you. Do we want to keep discussing that larger issue, I think, which you still, you say hasn't quite been answered?
Well, it may be, it may be good, since we've broached the subject, that you go home and sleep on it and start thinking. Some of you may have a clearer idea about what you think that means than others, or whatever. I would feel more comfortable if we kind of had a discussion about the, you know, pros and cons and impacts of your goal. I mean, I don't know what the goal is. That's what I'd just like to have, the goal.
Gene?
Yeah, I'm happy that Terry brought that forward. I would, and I'm going to be blunt about it, I'm blunt about it.
I would, and I'm going to be blunt about, I'm blunt about everything, but I'll be blunt about this. I don't foresee myself ever supporting an oversight board. That's what your job is, that's what our job is. Michael, you hit it right on the head. When you said if somebody comes and complains to you, you go directly either to the mayor's office and talk to her about it? One of the things I think that, and maybe it's just because of the way we're set up here, we could have all the boards and things we want. Nothing stops people from coming to that microphone on a Monday night and letting us have it on a certain issue. And if we don't vote the way that they think we're supposed to vote, we're going to get in trouble. That'll never change. I can tell you that. If I've learned one thing in 24 years, it's people, 50% of the people are glad you get out of bed, the other 50% wish you'd stay in bed. I understand that, and I'm not trying to make a joke about it, but that's fact. And that's what, you know, our job is to do that. But I think Terry's idea is a great idea. There might come to a point where we need to use that, that office there. But if you're looking for some way to get more people involved, we've tried to get more people involved for years and years and years. But I don't think having an oversight board or an unelected position, you have to remember who puts us in these chairs. And that's the people that vote here in the city of Bellingham. And every one of us is accessible. Our phone numbers are everywhere, our emails are everywhere. They can come to my house. I just don't know how many much more we need to do. But I agree with the first part of what Terry's proposed.
And I want to be real clear that this is broader than just the police department. So one of the things that I thought was important is that this is citywide and not just something dealing with, with the police. And I think that the police chief would agree with that, too.
April?
Yeah, thank you for the motion, and it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that. Other communities have tried, attempted, some have failed, and we can learn a lot from them. How do you engage populations that we were originally talking about in that resolution? And I think that would be really helpful to hear back on, like, what have other communities done that have been successful? What are things that we could mimic? What were their learned lessons so that we don't end up going down a road that somebody's already been down? The other part of it, you know, respectfully, everyone, everyone might have the physical, like, that we can see on the outside capability of walking through this door, but not everyone feels comfortable walking through this door.
Right.
And so I appreciate that you understand that, just like we do have our emails and addresses, everything out there, but, you know, I work really hard to go out into communities where I just normally would never be, and to make sure that those pathways are open. And I hear a lot of some real serious, some concerning concerns. I think that's where, and I don't, I don't know if it'd be in committee of the whole, I don't know if the rest of the, I guess that's where I need to get a bit of a feeling, is when we're making decisions, we look at our legacies and we look at our policies. But ultimately, we are having a huge demographic shift coming across America. In 2020, 18 years and younger will be a majority minority, which means there will be more people of color, 18 years and younger, than there will be white. That's exciting in so many ways, but at the same time, people of color, just using one of the people that we talked about, are disproportionately living in poverty, disproportionately marginalized, disproportionately incarcerated, I mean, all of these things. So if we're really going to make a difference for tomorrow, which is where I'm just really struggling with the jail decision, I think beyond our policies and the legacies, like that equity piece, knowing that all of our, all of our employees are educated in it, we still misuse the terms continually throughout departments, just really developing, and maybe it could be a work session, I don't know which committee it would be in, but really starting to find out, what is equity to this city? We use that word, we change the word from equality to equity. I mean, we did all the right things with our language, but as my mom always told me when I was dating, like, listen to what he does, not to what he says. And we say a lot of great things in the city of Bellingham. But when you start looking at our built environment and things that we do, they don't necessarily match up to that equity piece. So if I could hear back from council members if that would be work that other people were interested, and I think it might get us to a place of understanding what this, what this safe place would look like, what our, how our decisions are always thinking about and always making sure that we are not disproportionately affecting others that are already disproportionately affected. So if that's something that other people would support, I'd be happy to be on that work group, too. I can set up a nice table for us and invite some people. It'd be great.
Roxanne?
To further define what I was with as an ombudsman, that's a really dumb word, I agree. So that's why they called us community relations specialists. It's a lot easier to understand. Just to give examples of what we did that was so exciting and was so engaging, was, yeah, we were the welcome mat for the city. So if you had a complaint, or you had feedback, or you just wanted to make your voice known, you could start with us, and we would get it to the right people. We would solve a lot of problems, we would work with different departments to problem-solve a lot of these issues. And at the same time, we were always out in the community. We were always trying to get people to come to meetings, or, you know, get their voice heard. We would go to churches, we would go to neighborhood organizations, businesses, you name it. But, and we'd also do really proactive media relations and social media outreach. I don't see a lot of these activities happening here, and I think that's what the mayor's trying to get at, is how can we include different stakeholders and make them feel welcome in our community? So I'm looking forward to seeing what comes of that.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess my reaction, April, I'd like to talk to you personally about this because I'm not sure quite what you're suggesting yet in terms of an activity that, or investigation that we would go through. So maybe we'll have that conversation, you and me. Okay, we'll go on to the next item. The next item is a public works presentation and public hearing, actually, not a public hearing, we're done with that, regarding the draft 2018-2023 Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP. Thank you to the engineers in the audience who've been sitting patiently. We did indeed have a public hearing on the tip. This is a work session. This does need to be approved before the end of the month, I believe. State law requires that we adopt it before July 1st. This has already been presented to us. It has already been, I think, recommended by the Transportation Commission back on May 9th. Ted Carlson?
Yeah, thank you, good afternoon, Ted Carlson, that is a nice summary. We don't have a formal presentation today. We had a fairly detailed presentation prior to the public hearing. We had a few questions that night. We did have an opportunity to provide some additional information to council on projects that had been done, most notably related to the transportation benefit district funding. I was able to meet with a council member about some questions that they had related to the timing of Telegraph. But other than that, we haven't received any questions from the community or any concern. So we're really here to answer any questions that council may have. As Council President Lilquist pointed out, we are recommending council take action on the resolution. It does need to be adopted by the end of the month, as he pointed out. So other than that, Chris or I, or Chad Scholhouser would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Roxanne?
I just know that we approve the Transportation Improvement Program.
Second?
We have a motion second to recommend tonight approving the resolution to adopt the Transportation Improvement Program. Further discussion on this? I think, okay, April?
So I was able to meet with Ted afterwards in regards to Telegraph, and thankfully, I think the Transportation Commission, Chris, Ted, most of the department, agree that it's certainly, certainly something we need to get done sooner than later. Ted, you gave some pretty good explanations to me as to, even if we could get started tomorrow, why we can't get started tomorrow. I walked away feeling a little bit more consoled about it, but then when I went to go say it again, it didn't, it didn't, I could use, I could use another Ted session of Telegraph.
Sure. Telegraph, we have it as Project Eight in the draft tip that's before the council. And we have it shown in the outer three years, so year four of the six-year tip. And that's because it's not a fully funded project. Any projects that don't have all of the required funding have to be shown in the outer three years. So that's the way the tip is structured. We are pursuing grants right now. That is the project, really, that we're putting forward with all of the grant opportunities. We have a pending grant for some federal funding. We'll be meeting with the COG on that and making presentation, and hopefully be finding out later this summer from the COG whether or not we're successful in getting our federal grant request, which I think is 1.6, 1.6 million. Actually, it's listed here in the tip. And we're also pursuing Transportation Improvement Board funding. That's state funding, that's part of the state sales tax, gas tax, I'm sorry. And, but the reality with any project is, you know, it does take two to three years to build. Even once we get funding, we'll have a year, a year plus of design and permitting. And specifically to Telegraph, we don't have all the necessary right-of-way. So anytime we need additional right-of-way, which we can't really pursue until we're at a certain stage of the design, at least pursue formally until we're at a certain stage of the design where we know exactly what we need, we always say roughly it takes another year to get that process through, especially when we have federal funding that has a very prescribed methodology for property acquisition, which includes appraisals and review appraisals, and just takes a while to do it. So even if we had the money today, it would most likely be 2020, 29, yeah, 2020, 2021, before we can actually construct Telegraph. I think it's just a reality of the project timeline, which is frustrating at times, but I would just say that it is, from staff's perspective, the project that we are pursuing as our highest priority for grant funding. So hopefully, we're successful. If we are successful with the, with the grant funding and we have a, an additional shortfall, that's when we could come back to council through the budget process and perhaps make a recommendation that we put additional local money on that project to move it forward. But the reality is, we probably need to wait until we find out where we come through with those grants.
And the COG, the COG decision is when?
Good afternoon, council. We presented the grant application last week, maybe it was a week and a half ago. And then we will, in about two weeks, be scoring those. And then I believe the policy board decides on July 12th. We will then, well, if we're successful, we will then be using that to show the Transportation Improvement Board that we've secured some funding, which will be greatly in our favor if we're successful and have that federal money. Their money will then fill the gap that we're showing for funding, and that would lead to construction. But like Ted has indicated, it's probably a couple of years out.
Okay. I think the other concern, and we kind of did this whenever we had Aldrich, we've had the Parks System also trying to get safe connectivity. Have you, have you all been talking with Parks about, are there, are there ways where we could get children and people off the road since it is such a very unsafe space to be working with the new goal, the goal line going through there?
Well, we have our Safe Route to School Project, the Cordana Safe Route to School Project, fill the sidewalk gaps and build a bike lane on the east side. But the Parks Department, the developer of those homes, actually did construct the trail to the back of the school. And that will be available for kids to walk and bike on as well.
I'm saying, we did that.
You're asking, is there an opportunity to do the same thing along Telegraph? The Parks Department does have plans for a trail connection in there at some point, but there's no right-of-way. Again, when you kind of look at just the timing of the project and the funding and all the other things that Greenways has, and Leslie obviously could speak to this much better than I, I think the ability to get something in place that would act as kind of like a parallel off-right-of-way pedestrian connection prior to what we could do with Telegraph would be challenging at best and probably not likely.
Thank you.
Just a brief comment. I think this is the importance of the level of service tool that you referred to earlier, April, is that that level of service tool will show us when there are transportation gaps that aid our park system. And then, once we've identified those, that goes directly into the tip and how we personally rank and how we justify to funders why our program's important. The motion before us is to recommend approving the tip, the resolution authorizing the tip. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'll bring that forward, positive recommendation tonight.
That was easy for a tip.
Great, we'll now then move on to approval of minutes. We have minutes from May 22nd, committee meeting.
Move through.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any corrections or changes to the minutes for May 22nd? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll then go on to old and new business. I'll start with two items of old business, then we'll go on to new. Under old business, the town hall, which was rescheduled, is now scheduled finally, completely, for June 13th, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. with the Bellingham High School auditorium. The topic will be housing. The doors will open at 6 o'clock. The first half will now consist of a panel discussion, and then the second half will be the more traditional town hall opportunity for members of the public to share their ideas and hopefully their potential solutions on housing affordability issues. And then the other item is, we already talked about this, on June 14th, the following day, there will be a flag-rising ceremony right in front of City Hall to raise the Bellingham City flag. And then please, everyone, if you're there, stay for an open house. We have new city council offices, we share the hearing examiner, and soon with the fire safety division, come join us at a small, open house. We'll now move on to new business. Pinky?
Thank you, President. So last week, our president chose to pull out of the Paris Climate Accord. And that doesn't sit well with me, along with many others across the country. And there is an opportunity for our city to show leadership on this. There is a group called the Environmental Team at Bloomberg Philanthropies, and they are putting something together that is an international community and parties to the Paris Agreement from the U.S. state, local, and business leaders. And I'd like to move that our city sign on to this and show that we are still willing. So this agreement is in front of you on your desk here. It is just a, you know, basic in regards to us participating and still being part of the Paris Accord, which I think is important in our leadership. And just so you know, Bart Gardner did some research for us to get this all ready. And also, we spoke with the Natural Resources. We are on target right now to meet all of our conditions. So it's not going to cost us anything additional financially. The city is actually ahead a little bit in regards to meeting our climate action goals. So it will have no financial implications, but I think it's very important for us as a city to stay, to take a stand and say that we are still committed to meeting these climate action goals, and we, as a city, are willing to stand for the Paris Climate Action Agreement. So again, my motion is that we sign on to the Paris Agreement that is being put forth by the Environment Team at the Bloomberg Philanthropies.
Second.
We have a motion, and before us, to join the open letter to the International Community and Parties to the Paris Agreement from U.S. state, local, and business leaders, and we would be the local leaders. Any further discussion on this?
Mayor Kelly.
Mayor Kelly, because, yeah, there, this is, there's more than one way that cities are stepping up. Kelly?
Well, I just wanted you to note, I've already signed up for the Mayor's National Climate Action Agenda. That's through Bloomberg, too. Or you can call it the Climate Mayors, if you want. So I would encourage you to also participate in this because it was a pretty mind-numbing moment.
Terry?
Yeah, I was going to ask that you do that, but I'm glad to see that you do. I just think it's critically important that cities, and I applaud Mayor, Governor Inslee for signing, joining with Governor Brown and other governors, to stand in defiance of this president who is willing to put short-term profits over the long-term concern of the planet. And there's, and in defiance of so many citizens and cities and states who are working so hard on these things. So we have to make our voices known on this. We can't sit back and go along with this kind of idiocy. So yes, I support this, and I thank you, Mayor, for signing on to that. I think it's very important.
Jean?
Yes, I agree, and Kelly, you were being too nice. It wasn't mind-numbing, it was a little lower than that.
I was ready to bring this forward, too, but I want Pinky's light to shine. And I just really appreciate serving with the council that I feel like is going to be massively supportive of this, and we can stand in solidarity.
Yes, Pinky, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. As you point out, we are already, as a city, committed to these greenhouse goals, and it's, it's, it's just a matter of solving our common problems with technology and innovation and progress. And I think what's most disappointing is that the president's comment fails to acknowledge the progress underway, fails to acknowledge that we are already moving forward to solve our pollution and energy problems. And we're going to continue doing it. The open letter, I think, says that we will continue to do our part. And so I think it's a very appropriate action. As you said, the Mayor Inslee, sorry, Governor Inslee stepped-
As you said, the Mayor Inslee, sorry, Governor Inslee stepped forward. Well, it used to be three, now it's 13 states have signed on from their governors, saying they will continue with their commitments to progress towards a cleaner future. Even the city of Pittsburgh, which Trump called out, is like, who he, who he represents, Mayor Pittsburgh said, well, my community is already committed to a new energy economy, so if you want to represent us, that's what we're doing. I, I asked our staff to give me an indication of, of what we're already doing, there's a few lists. Again, we already have a climate action plan, which is being revised. Just recently, we committed to the Green Direct Program, partnering with PSC, that has to do with purchasing our municipal energy from new clean energy facilities. We are most of the way through, I think, and we're partway through changing our streetlights out to low-energy, consuming LED streetlights. We are converting our fleet from diesel to, to other fuel sources for lower carbon output. We already have solar panels on several buildings, and we'll apparently be putting a new large array on the water treatment plant sometime later this year, a post-poly treatment plant. One of the things we're looking at for treatment is anaerobic digestion, and one of the reasons being considered is it has reduced emissions as one of the byproducts, no pun intended, of adopting that technology. And several years ago, we actually retrofit municipal facilities with, I think it was a $6 million bond, to change the way our buildings operate so that they have, use less energy and contribute less to global warming. So the city, these are the, some of the things the city has already been doing, which is exactly why it's easy for us, I think, to recommit to continuing these sort of actions. So thank you, Pinky, for bringing that forward. Is there any further discussion? The motion is to sign on to the open letter. Okay. Peter, do we need to bring this back again in the evening as well?
I would, Peter, it's a good practice to have your official vote during your regular meeting.
Okay, we'll treat this as a recommendation of the committee of the whole to sign on to the open letter to the international community, having to do with the Paris Agreement. All those in favor signing on signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, I'll bring that forward, the positive recommendation, and thank you, Kelly, for already joining the mayors. Any other items under new business? I see many fingers. I miss, look at Gene and Roxanne, and then Terry.
This will be brief, it's a little bit old business. Last Monday night, Jan and I had dinner with the Sister City Ski-to-C team down at the yacht club. We had a great team, we had two from Shangju, South Korea, one from Mongolia, two from Canada, and, you know, they didn't feel good about their, their place, but out of 357 teams, they finished 227th for people that have never raced together before, so they were very happy with that. And then the next day, we had a little tour of City Hall, and they are, Shangju especially really wants somebody from the city to come to their celebration this fall, so be thinking about that. One of us has got to go, so I'm sure a lot of people say, well, this guy's got to go and never come back, but that's fine. But no, we, we need to think about it, because, huh? Well, we'll think, it's in Shangju, South Korea. I mean, they've been so gracious coming here, and last time Kelly and I sat here and talked to them, the mayor, Shangju, was less than diplomatic when he said, somebody better come next year, so. But it, it's, I don't know, we'll think, I, I don't know how much alcohol and drugs I'd have to take to fly that long, but we'll worry about that later, anyway.
You can do it.
Not any more than I do here, right? No, just kidding.
Okay, well, Roxanne has to follow you, I think, and, go ahead.
Petition and signature gatherers have been working on getting an initiative on the ballot that would have harmful effects on our community potentially in allowing schools and also businesses to ban transgender people from using bathrooms. So on the 19th of this month, the city council will hold a public hearing on an ordinance that would ask people to decline to sign Initiative 1552, so I just wanted to notify the council that this was going to be in the works and encourage people to advocate pro, against, or otherwise on the Initiative 1552.
Okay, that'll be on the 19th of July. Terry?
Yeah. Last night, unfortunately, the city lost a hero. Bill Distler died. Bill was a Vietnam veteran who, upon his return, dedicated his life to peace and justice and worked tirelessly on those issues. And I would just like to ask that tonight, we open our meeting with a moment of silence to recognize Bill's passing. He was a, he was a hero to a lot of people, and his work was, it was just tireless, his dedication.
Is there any objection to a moment of silence tonight to honor Bill Distler, Vietnam veteran and peace activist? Okay. April?
Two quick ones. First, we have our, our townhouse, town hall on the 13th. Unfortunately, it's the same night as the, the jail hearing, so we'll all be watching that. Maybe we could have a party in the mayor's boardroom while we watch theirs on, on the rerail, but I would like to have on our meeting on the 19th, at least 20 to 30 minutes in committee of hold to discuss what happened there, kind of maybe have Rick come and give an overview, and then we can decide what we want to do with that information. So I just want to make sure we do a placeholder. If nobody's objected, we can just add that on to our next agenda.
So that would be a, a follow-up agenda item to the town hall at the meeting subsequent to that?
Yeah, give us a chance to, well, we're going to hear, at the very end, we're going to hear a lot of public comment, and I, I think it'll be our, our opportunity to let people know what we heard and then give direction on where we want to go from there. So I just want to really reserve that time so that we can do that. And also, just an update, that we, we had been getting information that we could have well over 100, if not 200, people, and so in looking at that table dialogue, that, that just wasn't going to be able to pan out, so we do have our panel, and we, we will be using that last hour. We're going to be answering questions, so please go ahead and submit your questions, so we'll let the panel answer some of the questions that are coming from the community. So if you really have some pressing ones that you wanted to hear back on, please send those in. You can do it through Facebook or through email, or give a phone call here at City Hall. We need those soon, probably by the 9th, so we can give those to the panel. And then, if, if you don't get your question answered, you can sign up for the public comment period on there. The plan right now is that we would have the panel up first, we'll be in the front row, and then, when we switch into that public comment, we can be visual to the audience. Of course, we don't typically give feedback during public comment, but yeah, we'll kind of do a little switcheroo. Marie has agreed to be our facilitator, emcee, so that'll work out really nicely. And then, if there's no other questions, I'll just move my second.
Well, so let me just go on. Is there any objection to scheduling that follow-up at the very next meeting in committee of the whole? Great, let's go ahead and do that then. Thank you.
And then, just one of the things that I worked on before I came to city council member was on the Bellingham International Airport Committee. We worked to do trail options for people on the west end of the, outside the city, but in the UGA. We got that idea of doing the trails on port property there and airport property. It was already passed through the master plan with the port, but it's just, there's no money allocated to it, so Wacom Parks and Recreation Foundation really stepped up to the plate, worked with the airport, and got that trail open on the west side of the airport for one day only, and in just three hours, they had two, almost 200 people come and check it out, and the train spotting was amazing, you get a really unique view of the city there, and you could, for the very first time, having made the commute a lot when I was younger, I mean, you could ride your bike in 15 minutes, you could be in Ferndale, so it was really quite nice to have a very safe connection to go there. So, I mean, the hope is that people will continue to advocate and talk to the port about opening up that trail permanently, so it was fun, and thanks to the port and, and thanks to the airport and the Wacom Parks and Recreation Foundation.
Thank you, April. One final item that I'll have under new business. People may have noticed that in front of City Hall this weekend, there's been a little tense city. It was a demonstration of sorts to draw attention to the plight of homelessness. There are people are calling for the community to step up and help solve the problem of homelessness. It's kind of an unusual protest in the sense that the city actually gave a permit for this, that the mayor and the administration is very cooperative, providing portable toilets. It's a sort of, I don't know, very positive demonstration, I think. This is not against the city, but for the community, so people wondered what was going on about that. That's what it was, and I don't think anybody at the city took any offense at what they were doing. It ends this afternoon, they have a perm which goes through this afternoon. I, I think it was Lori who organized it last year, herself was homeless and is recently housed, she's been the organizer. I just really appreciate the attitude of everyone here in the city, understanding that, you know, the, the positive message about homelessness that the event was, was meant to convey. Okay, so we'll now go on to an executive session. We had originally one item scheduled, and there's two more added. The first item is Haskell Corporation versus the city of Bellingham, that's, and then the next two are added, are both possible litigation elements, that's three items in total, total time approximately one and a half hour, oh, it could be shorter. I will come back here at 5:20, no, 4:25 or before. We are in recess.